All that said, I'm going to attempt to establish a forum. And Ms. Cooper is the all-star board now. She has been replaced by Greg Morris, who's all the way down here to my far right. And we're joined by Daniel Wallace, Johnny Schimpf, and Commissioner Magnus. And we're used to Delmon. My name is Newt Cunningham, and I am the Newt County Judge. So, thank you, thank you all for coming yesterday. I think we've established a forum. And I'm going to look to Daniel Harris to present the overview of the draft of the Lake Ralph Hall zoning regulations. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Newt. We appreciate you taking off the meeting and having us out there tonight. What we will do is we will walk you through a presentation. We'll start this public hearing, and we will walk you through a presentation of the Lake Ralph Hall zoning regulations. I know if you're sort of sitting over here on your side, it's just a little hard to see the PowerPoint here on the screen. I think there were some hard copies of the PowerPoint, but this will all be also online, where you can download a copy of the PowerPoint. Commissioners, are you okay not seeing the PowerPoint? Okay, alright, so what we'll do, we'll turn the presentation. The commissioners won't be able to see the PowerPoint, but everyone else will. Hold on just one second. Ma'am from the school, can we get rid of the echo on there? Do you know how? Alright, so. One, two, can you hear me?
No.
Now you can hear. Well, I'll just try to speak as loud as I can on there, so hopefully, hopefully that works. Well, thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Daniel Harrison. I'm with Green's Nichols. I am part of the team helping to develop the Lake Ralph Hall zoning regulations. And we also developed the Lake Ralph Hall Conference Plan. Just so you know a little bit about the county, the county has the Commissioners' Court, which is the ultimate deciding authority for the zoning. They approve the zoning, they are the ones who approve rezoning as well. And so Commissioners' Court adopts the zoning regulations, and that's what we're moving forward to. Just so you can sort of see on the PowerPoint, sort of see, we have four county commissioner precincts. So you can see Commissioner Magnus, it's that one in blue, has the majority of the area that's affected, affected by Lake Ralph Hall. And we, of course, we have the county judge as well, who is the fifth member of the Commissioners' Court. We also have, what we have tonight is the Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission, and that's the meeting you're in right now. We have five members of our Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission. The county judge, Newt Cunningham, is the chair of the Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission. Jerry Magnus, the county commissioner, is a member. Greg Morris, LaDonia City Council member, is, this is his first, not his first meeting, but first time on the zoning commission tonight. Former Mayor Cooper was previously on the Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission. And then we have Jaylen Wallace and also John Ed Cheppinell on the commission. So what we'll talk about tonight is, got a few things. Talked about, we'll show you the purpose of the project, a little bit of the history, what's been done in the past. We'll talk about the zoning regulations, give you a quick overview of what those mean. We'll review some of the changes from our last meeting that we had at the end of last year. We'll talk about next steps, where we move on from tonight. We'll do a Q and A, and of course, we'll have the public hearing, where we'll have people be able to have their comments heard by the Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission. So, purpose of the project, why plan and why have zoning? The purpose of the project is to establish zoning around Lake Ralph Hall. And so there, you can see a picture of the lake and after the shoreline. And what the state law sets up is to establish zoning around 5,000 feet around the shoreline of the lake. We use the Lake Ralph Hall Conference Plan to help guide the formulation of the zoning regulation, and those documents can also download online. So what value does zoning bring to residents? Because people will ask the question, well, how will zoning benefit anything around the lake? What zoning does is enable people currently living in the area or owning property to have a voice in how the lake area develops. Without zoning, without a process that the county commissioners can take a look at, development will just happen unregulated. And as we've seen in other areas of Texas around older lakes, you see how that happens in the state legislature is set up. Is zoning to help control some of the mega side effects when a lake is created and land starts to develop around it? The other thing is it provides a predictable land use pattern around the lake. So people know what's going to happen around the lake, or inform about what the future in the next 20 years the lake should look like. So why plan? We know as a state, we are growing, we just topped 30 million people here last year. People are moving to Texas from all over the country. And as we are growing, we see the counties around us have a lot of growth, and that growth is filling into Fannin County. And what counties and others would like to avoid is unregulated growth. As land changes, one of the inevitable things about growing as a state, growing as a country is that we're going to have more people, and that's going to change the way the land looks here in Fannin County. And once again, zoning are only tools that we have as a county to help manage that change rather than just letting that change happen. Whatever changes, no one has a say in it. Zoning provides that man. And also, it's to manage a strategic resource around the lake. As the lake gets filled in with water, of course, we don't want things necessarily polluting the lake, taking, taking things out of the lake as far as quality and things like that. We want it to be an attractive place, that's going to be an asset for people working around it. So once again, the state set up legislation and enables counties to do zoning. The reason why the state added this legislation, there are no, except for paddle lake out east along the Louisiana border, there are no natural lakes in Texas. All 30 million of us are either drinking surface water or well water. So provide that, provide that drinking water for the state of Texas, all our lakes are residential. And so as the state and other agencies have created lakes across Texas, we mentioned Palau Canyon before, and that has been a rest of as a, as a example, probably what we would not want to see. The history around Lake Palau Canyon is there was no development for the first 20 years around Palau Canyon. So people would buy land, subdivide, 25-foot lots, put a trailer out there, or RV, because it's cheap, affordable, and why no one's out there, has to change initially. It's all very affordable. But 20 years later, once those things start to age, once those things start to develop, people have realized that, oh, well, we wish we would have had some Texas in there, so maybe our lake wouldn't have turned out necessarily like this. So with that, that's why the Texas Legislature has taken a look at, and saying, counties, you can do zoning around certain lakes, because we've seen some of the side effects that happen around unregulated lakes. And we'll try to let the people who live around that area have a say in that. But the way that we have that say is we have our voice in the Commissioners' Court, and also here at the Lake Ralph Hall Planning Commission, where all meetings start with a public comment period, and when zoning happens, there's a public hearing like we have after night. We also have the Lake Ralph Hall Comprehensive Plan, which recognizes that, yes, we need zoning around the lake. We also mentioned in that plan that you have Bodark Lake, a very similar process, almost the exact same process was used for Bodark. And there's some processes that we can take advantage of to make sure that there's consistency how the county operates, but also a chance to improve, so Lake Ralph Hall will have some advantages that Bodark would also benefit from. And then once again, as this land changes and people move to Fannin County, this is the opportunity for the county, the current residents, to decide how to manage that change. So we have examples of, of course, you know, some desirable development as businesses come in, people have access to the lake, natural areas, these are all things that people express, you know, they like to see around the lakes homes. You know, when we have a rural area that starts to develop, people move in. We also have things that, you know, will start to change the area, that, you know, people will go, we don't necessarily want our lake to look like these other lakes in Texas, where we have potentially lots of traffic, lots of, lots of just congestion, things that don't match the rural lifestyle that I'm accustomed to here in the area. So what are the things that we can regulate? For example, we want to see, you know, just open stores, or boats, extra homes, these are things that we try to protect the existing homeowners from having to see this type of development. And once again, I'm sure you've been at other lakes in Texas, and you sort of see some areas that you're like, we wish this could have been done better. And that's what we're, since we have a fresh slate here with Lake Ralph Hall, that is our opportunity to do that. Limit things like open storage and even more heavy industrial uses that could potentially be around the lake if there's no zoning, then there's absolutely no control about what could happen on your neighboring property. Talked about RV parks, are the things I refer about, businesses very close to homes, these are things that once again, just happen without zoning. Also, we have different areas that are unincorporated, typically zoning only happens inside cities. But here in this example, we have an unincorporated area where we just have a mixture of everything, where we have shops, next to single-family homes, next to RVs, next to other commercial businesses, so it's really a oddball. What we're trying to do with the Lake Ralph Hall zoning regulation, provide that applicable land use pattern. That's going to protect people's investment in their property. They wouldn't necessarily have to have concern about whether they may, may be to affect their investment in property. Now, we also have this picture here because, you know, with zoning, they control density of the area, because it's just not businesses, you know? And this is an example of something that's maybe too dense for the area. You know, as people come out and you have large corporations that can develop several thousand acres, how will that look? And so this is one also way that we regulate land around the lake as far as the density of development. So once again, why is that? It's really the only opportunity the public has to be involved in any of these things that are about to happen, once the lake is built and people are trying to purchase land around the lake. Without zoning, the public has no involvement, and how the lake area will develop, property is always at risk of always going to happen next year. We have a couple of documents, but everything's online, you can download that. I'll have a, we'll have a website here in a second. We have a plan, and then also we have the zoning documents. Once again, I'll put the slide back up if it hit you on watch, so take that to your face or write that down. All the information's on there, we put all the PowerPoints from every meeting that we had on there, and you can go there and see the history, history of the project. So on that website, we just really talked about, you know, what the schedule's been, have all our documents, and the purpose of the project. So on the schedule, we talked about where we mentioned Conference Plan, that was wrapped up at the fall 2022, and so now we're on phase two, is the zoning regulations. If everything, they're in that public notice, the Commissioners' Court will have a hearing on February 7th, taking a little. So the project schedule previously, where we did the Conference Plan started back in June and July of 2021, and then, like I said, went to October 2022 to develop that plan. And now we're in zoning regulations here at our public hearing. And tonight, what we'll do, of course, is take some, we'll open the public hearing for comments, and then also, we'll, in the second part of the meeting of Lake Ralph Hall Zoning, we'll make a record of that after tonight in the public comments. Little on project history, we kicked off this project, this is back, of course, at the courthouse, where it was finished, being renovated, there were meetings in the bottom city hall, as part of the Commissioners' Court, where we kicked off different meetings. We met out here in August 2021 with different stakeholders, we met at LaDonia City Hall to hear feedback from stakeholders. Then we had an open house, which the same questions were asked stakeholders for more, for like the water providers, the constable, the city, how this lake is going to affect them. Same questions were asked at open house, or targeted to the public, where we were able to ask people about the type of developments that they wanted to see around the lake. Then after we had that open house, we went into different meetings with this Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission, developed that plan. We also, then we, because of size, we started meeting in Honey Grove, the library there was donated at the time, the facilities, with most of the meetings, and most of the lake. Then Commissioners' Court, of course, we updated them, got the process, we had a public hearing, having Lake Ralph Hall Zoning District Plan, and then the Commissioners' Court adopted it back in October. So then that's where we moved on to the zoning regulations. In November, we had a meeting at LaDonia City, ah, sorry, LaDonia Library, or sorry, Honey Grove Library, and we had feedback, we had comments online from the Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission to make into the document, to make the public review document, the one that is on the website right now, and that you can download. We did update Commissioners' Court before we went forward with these public hearings to make sure that they were good, gave us the green light, have public hearings, as you probably got a notice sent to you, wanting to make sure that they were fine with us moving forward with public hearings. So one of the things people want to know is sort of, okay, we have Bodark as well here in Fannin County that went through a similar process. What are the differences? Because one of the things we tried to do was to be transparent and have things very similar between the two lakes, so there wasn't too many differences as far as the process for developing around the lake. But some of the things that we just wanted to highlight with the zoning map, we'll have a copy over here that you can look at later, we also have some hard copies over there. We were able to improve the zoning map over the Bodark one, where as far as 5,000 feet around the shoreline of the lake, so if you sort of think you can, on those maps, there's a nice bubble that basically shows up around the lake. Well, we learned from Bodark when we got into the zoning, that created a lot of properties that had its pieces that were zoned, and we tried to minimize that. So you can see with the Lake Ralph Hall, what we've done is a little bit more jagged shape to include properties or the extension of property lines, so it was a lot easier for people to tell, it's my property in the zoning area. So that was one major difference. We also took a look at the minimum lot sizes between the two different lakes, they're a little bit smaller, based upon the feedback that we got from our meetings, and also how Bodark has been operated. So for instance, agricultural zoning, Bodark, the object can be modified around the Ralph Hall. So it's a little bit more flexible in that sense. Other things that we had learned from Bodark was setbacks, and for instance, if I'm creating subdivision, creating lots, where do I put my house? Don't put it right on parking lot, my neighbor has to accept that 15 feet. So on my one acre lot, my house can't be all 15 feet from my apartment. So one of the things that we did for Lake Ralph Hall is we adjusted those to be more flexible. As you see, the Bodark, there's been some questions, various to that, so we were able to adjust that differently. So zoning openly, when we created the zoning map, and started with a particular land plan that you see on the screen, that's, so there's two maps, and this is really our vision map that we have to say, like, you know, all the land around the lake has developed, what would we like to see? You've got layout, you've got patterns. So that's what the feature of land is kind of like. So that's sort of helps us inform our zoning map, and we have a lot of discussion at our previous meetings about, you know, do we want to zone, do we full vision, against vision, or do we want to sort of manage the program? We have a more axel regarding one. One of the Bodark lessons to learn is we'd like to go ahead and zone again in mine. Then moving on to developing text, just real quick, there's a section in there, I just wanted to highlight those words. Section one is just general provisions, that's just how we update the map, how we monitor things, there's not too much that I think the general public would be interested in there. The next section is, I think, where people would find more interest in, is where we establish our zoning districts. We have our different zoning categories, we have our agricultural and ranching districts, that's a three-acre minimum district. We have a rural states and a family, that's a one-acre minimum lot district, and then we have our location to be covered. Typically, if there's not water and sewer to your, to your home, you need a septic tank to handle that, and so you're going to generally be that one acre rural yard. We do have a lake commercial, and we looked at different areas of the lake, where should the commercial be, and what commercial should that be. So the lake commercial is more for our retail uses, restaurants, these are the nice areas for destination places where people would want to go. And then we do have a general retail and commercial of all the areas where, you know, if there's many warehouses, like places to store things, not right next to the lake or on the main corridor, and we do have a area. The two other districts are the Lake Operations District. This is for operations of the dam in the area right around the shoreline. We had partners out, and we'll highlight that here in just a second, we're going to see it on the map. We have a peninsula that has an intersect map, where the traffic and logistics would make sense for commercial development. So that partner with that Lake Commercial District, this is sort of the partnership of that, so there could be a park out there, a cell, and then it's like one day, and of course, it goes out there. Government Conservation District, this is for the federal grasslands, cattle grasslands, of course, there's some use of that, that does also bump up against the lake, so that is similar to Lake Operations and some of the other things. There's also a Plan Development Zoning District, this is for allow for unique and innovative developments for the Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission, if someone would have an idea that they're presenting in a Plan Development Zoning District, present that to the Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission, and also for the Commissioners' Court to consider that people could come up with unique ideas, and of course, the zoning needs to be flexible to allow those types of ideas to be presented. So there are ways to do different things in there, and the plan development, when you see that, that one option to do that, to do that. Our land use regulations, there's a land use chart in there, and so you can see, I know this is a little hard for everyone to see, it's going to be sort of small, but what the chart does, lists all the different zoning categories, it lists all the different types of uses, like a restaurant or a single-family home. And then you can see what different, what different zoning categories those are permitted in, or we have an SUP, which means if there'd be a permit for that, that would go through the Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission and the Commissioners' Court, and then if it was blank, it would not be allowed in there. What we did was we started with the Bodark land use chart, and once again, we were trying to create consistency and similarities between how the two lakes were being managed and the rules and regulations. We also have, once again, this is just a chart showing the setbacks on there that we adjusted, and they've got the right settings on there, where people have, our history has shown us with Bodark. Couple of what I'm just sort of highlighting on the screen, if you saw two circles, those are our commercial areas, you'll see the majority of it is along 34, along that peninsula. Our development regulations typically just apply to our retail and commercial type developments. There are some developments, for instance, like septic tanks, generally not, not permitted, but of course, if it's smaller, if it's 28, there's a less, 20 lots or less, that type of development, those are, those are allowed. Zoning, development of new bodies, so who, the question, you're like, well, who do I talk to? Well, Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission here, their purpose is just for Lake Ralph Hall. It's five people, one is going to always be a county official, and then the others will be appointed. And they're here to listen, and they're here to make recommendations, the Commissioners' Court, so there's two levels of feedback that you get to see any one of these individuals, send them an email, come to a regular meeting, tell them what your concern is, they live here in the area, we have from where they were from, from Gilbert area, from LaDonia area, and so you could, you could talk to, talk to these people, and they've all been here a long time. And so they're your first sounding board that I would go to if you had a question, or you wanted to do something, rezonate a property. But then also, you have the Commissioners' Court, and remember, they're the ones that you elect, so they're, they're, Newt, Newt has elected us the county judge, Gary has elected us, the county commissioner, precincts, precincts. And so at the Commissioners' Court, both of you are elected officials, and they're the ones who have the ultimate say on the zoning and improving the zoning of the area. Moving on to just update the processing procedures, the same as Bodark, we didn't, once again, we didn't want to change any of the processes, we wanted it to be very similar, because there's businesses of county, make sure that they're just relatively, but also if someone's developing a one lake, you want them, basically, to be as the same as the other Lake Ralph Development review procedures, once again, there's just, how do we go amend the zone? Everything that we see here on the map, or on that heat collection, land use map, that could be changed. But once again, the change, and why we would change that is because we're doing the best we can here in 2023, but if you were trying to predict what this area is going to look like in 1983, well, we probably wouldn't have done a very good job of that. So the plan and also the zoning are able to be updated, be changed. Once again, we have the zoning commission here to listen to that, and we also have Commissioners' Court to take it over to that. So once again, these things, after they're adopted, they can be changed, and there's a process to do that. But once again, that's the nice part about zoning, and I know it's easy to sort of think about zoning, it's just tell me what to do, well, 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 that's sort of, I think, the wrong take on it, that's part of it, yes, but it's also the only point, the only place that anyone has a chance to say it. How's my, how's my neighborhood? How's my, how's my land? What's going to happen next year? Am I going to have any say in any of this with zoning? We have, we have volunteers that listen, we have other officials that listen as well. So those are the procedures that we have, public hearings go out, people get noticed if it's zoning changed, just like how we're feeling right now, people listen to comments here, want to take the public, for the public comments, time. So those are all of, the family notice is the most effective, getting your property, but we get the newspaper, it is in the newspaper as well, we also do, I'm probably not checking the county website very often, but they're also on the county website as well. So zoning text review, there's also relief procedures. So I mentioned before, sort of setbacks, and sort of lessons learned, we learned from Bodark. With Bodark, what they do, there's variances that you can get to allow something to say. But once again, there's a process where people can be heard and listened to, and that relief procedure goes through the process. Then of course, we have definitions, for this other thing. Few things talked about will be changed from our last meeting with the Lake Ralph Hall Zoning Commission. Our zoning map, there's a few edits on there, we did take, we show LaDonia a little differently in the previous map, we showed that as sort of a gray color, that said it was not zoned, but just to make sure that it's a little more clear, that it wasn't zoned, that, that color is completely removed, just a half pattern. So people, if you're in LaDonia city limits, the zoning does not apply, the county zoning does not apply. We also changed how the Lake Operations District, we added that zoning category for just showing the area, so that purple line, that may be a little hard for you to see, that is just marking, there's a lower limit where the zoning starts, which is basically where the shoreline is, and then it goes out, not totally to 5,000 feet, because it has that jagged line, just remember, the front, whole property, the porch, the property's in there that were a little bit more. So we did move that line, created the Lake, the Lake Operations District. Once again, this is too, too tight for you to see, but once we created that Lake Operations District, we had to have a purpose statement for it, what the intent of that Lake Operations District, once again, it's to operate the lake, but also along the shoreline in that peninsula, where we'll have that commercial development. Conference of Plan talks about. Conference of plan talks about opportunities for whether it's like, whether it's a park site, an amphitheater, things like that, that will be in conjunction with whatever's going on on the private property. So there would be commercial uses potentially in those areas. And so that would really be secondary use in there. So we did add that purpose statement as a follow-up change on there. We also added, once again, since we created basically a new zoning district, we had to have standards that go along with that. Basically, the same setback that we have for most of our other districts. There isn't a minimum lot area as far as, you know, creating a lot for a pipeline that's going to serve a dam or something like that. There's not one for that. Other things that were sort of follow-up items, camping grounds, there's a good camping grounds potentially in the lake operations district. So we have a use for that, that's also shown on the use chart. But also allowing that to be in the lake commercial district and the lake operations district. And that government conservation district, which is for that campground. Other revisions that were following up from the commercial district, just some small revisions about what would happen in that lake commercial district. We did see a project on there and wedding chapel being committed in that lake commercial district, part of that peninsula. We also had additions to the government conservation district. When you look at the park that we have on screen, once again, that sort of operates similar to the lake operations district, where there should be private commercials right there as well. We revised a dam-related use definition to specify lake ground fall related. So once again, just making sure that it's a lake ground fall-related operation. Not necessarily a van to be brought off or something like that. So that was just sort of tweaking of word, once again, following up since we're making this amendment, just how to, how to park it with the ministry of that. Once again, there is, it's a little hard to see in there, but with that lake operations can include whether the residents or the temporary logging of operations or emergency personnel or something like that. So just making sure all the eyes and eyes and ears are with making the lake operations. Marina, just had to clarify that a little bit because we want to specify that is on the water. And place that, you know, what could be right next to it. Well, traditional development standards, one of the things that, once again, maybe the lake operations district, if there was, for instance, a helipad, because we have a section in there, so if something will never stop, helipad, or adjacent to a hospital, or whatever, things like that. But we want to make sure that there is emergency, for emergency purposes, that there's a helipad around the lake. So somehow it is in the zoning district, let that just be one of the areas where emergency services. Community center, you know, public building, I definitely put some clarification on that to make sure that you have these things identified correctly. One of the other changes that we made was just as we made the lake operations district, just some clarification that we have section in there, on the left of the wall and things. And just making sure that the official zoning district map includes the, there's a partnership with, with LaDonia expanding and annexing. But there's a process for the county to release the zoning on that. So there's a bunch of that, you know, those two entities that work together, the city expand. Because the city may have, may expand, annex, they've been doing volunteers now in Texas, so may expand, may not. So, but it does happen, the county and the city need to be coordinated. So owner would not be subject to zoning regulations, like the cities can have, if you're trying to operate. So next step, what we'll do is of course, we will hear comments tonight. And then here at, I think, 6:30, we'll start to, we may push it back if people have comments on that. But what we'll do is, it's like a part after the public hearing, just for the Lake Brown Falls owners, we're going to have discussion. And then with that, what we can do, Newt, I can, I can leave the microphone up here and if you would like. Because I think, correct, Melinda, she has to keep a record, public hearing. So Melinda has to keep a record. So Melinda, do you have a form? Or? And it's just, just a record keeping, so since it's an official public hearing, you just sign in with Melinda. So you can have a documented, because it's, uh, advocacy. So what we'll do, you can just sign in with Melinda, or you already signed a note. Or, yeah, we can do it right here, if you'd like to go. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have it up here, and if you could just put your name. So Melinda has a full record of where the public hearing is. Once again, that's a state, it's a mark. I'll leave it up here. If you could just go ahead and sign in, and if people would like to talk, what we could do is, and Newt will, will sort of refer to however you'd like to run it, whether, if there's a question, we can answer it, or whether we just want to hear comments, or there's different ways to do this.
Can't hear you.
Let me, is that better?
A little bit, yeah.
What I'm indicating is, I want Daniel to be up there answering questions. So if you've got a problem, I want you to know if you've got a problem. If you don't, and he answers your question, that may do away with your concern. Now, off the cuff, I would probably ask Daniel to present something about existing uses. I've looked over protests, a lot of people are concerned about their current use. And I think that paid, produced a number of people who want to comment.
Okay, so one of the things when, one of the things, one of the things we wanted to do was ask the lake, and we did this with boat arc as well. As change happens, we're not trying to change what's currently here and what people are currently doing on their property. This is to manage the change that is coming. So in the zoning, what we have in that table that describes all those type of uses that are allowed, we have something that's called a pre-existing use. So if that, if you have a use on your property right now, that continues, that continues forever as it allowed you. We're not trying to stop anything that's currently going on. Because that's real, that's not what, what the zoning's aiming to do. Everything's operating fine here as, you know, current population, because with distance, there's a lot of compatibility. If you're not that close to your neighbor, then you're not going to notice a lot. So there's nothing we're trying to stop with what's currently going on. But as a new development comes in, and someone's going to want to develop 100 acres and put a subdivision, or someone's going to want to come and eventually, not right now, but when the lake's there, put a hotel or something like that. Where's the best place for that? Because we don't want that affecting negatively the current property owners who are here right now. And so that's what that zoning is here to do. So we have a use, back to what Newt was saying, we have a use in there, so it's an existing use. So whatever you're doing on your property right now, and this is past, that's an existing use, and it will never change. So, so we're, once again, we're not trying to stop what's going on right now. It's really managing that growth, because as we look out the next 20 years, like I said, we're now over 30 million people here in the state of Texas, and our area is booming. And we're going to have two very nice lakes out here, really close to a large population center that here in a few years is going to be bigger than Chicago. And we are not that far from people to come out here and to buy land. And as, as people sell their land and to buy, how do we manage that as a community? So that's what we're trying to do. So we have the existing use definition in there to really, truly address, really address that.
So Daniel, I have a question about, about that. While I just give you a second, you know. I live north of here, have land, been in the family since 1837, four grandkids. If I formed a trust, an LLC, put the land in, however I did that legally, but it changed ownership. Someone else owned that trust of that LLC in the future, does that change the use? Does ownership of the land waive the grandfathering of current use?
No, no, it will, it will run with the lake, so that use will stay.
So whatever's on that land today can be there in perpetuity, regardless of who owns it.
Correct. Yeah, that's in the, that's in the zoning order.
Daniel, I don't know that you're quite sure, like, you support on presenting the starting of the shoreline plan. I want people to understand what the zoning does, does it do.
Good, good question. Okay, so Newt is talking about the shoreline management plan. So what zoning does, it controls land usage, what the land is used for. So is it used for a home, is it used for a restaurant, is it used for a hotel? What Newt is referring to is the shoreline management plan, where would people have access, a boat dock from their property out into the lake? And Upper Trinity is the owner of the land, under the lake. And so they'll, they'll own and maintain that. So what they do is, they're working on a shoreline management plan, we'll be working on it, to set the rules and regulations where you could go and ask for a boat dock. And it's been, in the cover of the plan, we put the correspondence between Upper Trinity and county, talking about, you know, Upper Trinity's intent to allow boat docks and for economic, you know, development and be a good neighbor and all that, all that stuff. That's all in the plan, and you could, you could see that existing correspondence. And just, there were a lot of questions about it, so the board of directors issued another statement just reaffirming everything that they had previously said. So people were asking, can we have a shoreline management plan now? But they're, they're still in the process of working that out, so they're trying to follow through. Because if you go to, to other lakes, yes, you, whether it's the Sabine River Authority issuing you a boat dock, if you were on Toakany, since we talked about that one, they're the ones who issue, issue that. Other lakes that are core lakes, like Lake Ray Roberts, no, people don't have, people don't have boat docks on those lakes, because that's core. But since this is a Upper Trinity lake, the intent is to have boat docks there. Now, there'll be some situations where, you know, they'll have to be registered, because sometimes these boat docks go off on the water, who they belong to, all these things, if you really get, stuff that you don't really think about. You want to go out there and enjoy the boat docks, but there's a lot of things to think about. How do we do this climate, make sure that no one's going to get electrocuted, if there's electricity out there and there's a light, those type of things. So they're, they're working on that, and the intent is to allow boat docks. But once you get to the further, further end of the lake, a dock may have to be, you know, 1,000 feet. So maybe that one is decent, but the intent to allow boat docks, and once again, that language is in the, in the plan, you can read from it. Correct, that has not been decided, because they're studying and coming up with those. Question, hold on, not even come up first. Yes, if you don't mind, sorry, I know you're in fact, we appreciate it.
Let me ask you a couple of questions first. I'm going to be trying to manage time. I want you all to know that I want everybody to have a chance to speak, but I've got to catch an airplane to go to London Sunday. So I guess my first question is, how many people want to speak here today? Okay, I think that's manageable. If we had a bunch of people who wanted to speak, I would probably ask you three minutes, every minute. Since we don't have a bunch of people who want to speak, I can be a little more generous at times. I do want to make my airplane. But all that aside, I'd ask that you be polite, be considerate, let's keep it courtly, you know. Baron Johnson may hate Earl Jones, but when they're, the presence of the court, they don't call each other names. They're very courteous and polite, and being in disagreement isn't a bad thing, it's actually a healthy thing. It's the way our democracy works. We've got different opinions on things, I can't do away with that thought. We're just going to have to decide what the majority wants to do, that's, that's our decision. All that said, I'd ask that you announce who you are and sign in, so Melinda will have that available, so you can put the minutes together. Thank you, Melinda, for your, for your time, appreciate you. She's, she's not a county employee, she's a volunteer. I'm getting paid, he's getting paid, these guys down here, I guess the city council, they're getting paid anything to be on the city council. They're volunteers, so we're, we're made acts. So I want to thank the people who are here, serving us, donating their time. And I ask that you keep that in mind and not get terribly angry at them.
I'm Robert Milton, Willie Fly. If a person has farm use in any of those zones, and he never, he doesn't sell it, it can continue to be farm use.
So, so the question that he asked was about farm use, and I guess also your ag exemption. So the zoning doesn't affect the ag exemption on your property? So that's still working with the county appraisal district to, whatever you're running on your property and with that exemption. So no, the zoning does not, even if you're zoned, that lake commercial and you're running cattle on it, and you have an exemption? No, that, that doesn't change. Because what, what the zoning does is, as it goes through the counting process, and you get a permit to build a restaurant, they're checking to make sure that that restaurant's allowed on that property, and making sure that you're not putting it within that setback on your neighbor's property. And so that is all, all it's doing. So the ag exemption is completely different, and it will not affect that.
I have a question.
Correct, and he was asking about the sales tax exemption from the state, correct. That, nothing that the county do.
Different, different.
Correct, correct, different. And I think there, there was one other question from somebody? Oh, sorry.
What if I subdivide my act and property?
Could you, could you come up and, and, sorry?
No, you're not.
And there's a little, little signing sheet, and sorry, you got it, got it. The mic. And we really do appreciate the high school for letting us have this facility tonight with the turnout.
So my name's Erica Menzian, I grew up here in LaDonia, and I have a quick question. If I have ag property right now, and I want to subdivide it, would that affect my act? If I have enough to subdivide it? Because I was reading, as long as you have three acres, I think that would be under residential.
Okay, if, if you were in the ag, let's say, for example, let's just say you had 100 acres. And the minimum, in your zoned ag, so the minimum lot size that you could create is, is three. So, so you have 12 acres, so you can create four, four lots, basically. And then, once again, the ag exemption really doesn't go with the zoning, so you could create four lots if you had 12 acres in your zoned, zoned ag. Now, if you wanted to go under that to the next category, the one acre minimum zoning, you would have to come in for a zoning, zoning change for that to go down to the one.
But I would still be keeping my act, correct? Even though?
Yeah, if you weren't.
To subdivide and still, someone might ask, well?
Yes, as long as you're still meaning, the only thing that would maybe throw you for a loop is, whatever the minimum, for whatever agricultural purpose you're using, if the county appraisal district says you have to have X amount of this, and you sold off, you sold off too much, then you wouldn't need that exemption again, but that would be.
Even though I'm in the yellow, y'all have me right now in the yellow, y'all have me with the hat.
If, if you have enough for the county appraisal district for that exemption, if you're in the yellow, you're still getting it. So if, if only if your property dipped below that and you're trying, trying to do it, you'd run into, uh, issues with the appraisal district, not happening, no, for the property. Sir, yeah, if you could come up here, sir, thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, no, this is my house.
Okay. Oh, yeah, man, it's mine. Thank you, thank you.
Just a fast question on the, uh, fast question, fast question on the ag. Is there a chemical, fertilizer runoff issue?
Oh, oh, sorry. Can, can you say your name?
I'm Patrick Schickel.
Pa- Patrick Schickel.
S H I N K L E, I work over there. So is there a limitation on the distance for chemical runoff, ag runoff, any type of fertilizer from the shore? How far do we, people are at, right now, ag, the, the, we, toward whatever we're doing, is there a limitation on that land from the runoff?
Uh, no, no. And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but there, there is no, a- as far as the agricultural use goes, it, it's just using it for agricultural purposes. It does not control what type of fertilizer or anything like that.
It doesn't limit anything you could put on there, right?
No.
You're talking about?
No, we don't have any limitations for, for, uh, fertilizers or anything like that.
My name is Russell Blackboard.
Nope. Sorry, you gotta get real, real, it's very sick.
My name is Russell Blackboard. Do you have any background? Councilman for the city of Ladonia. My home address is 202 Bonham in Ladonia. As a senior member of the city council, I've been asked by several members of the community to speak to this evening as an officer of the Chamber of Commerce of Ladonia. It's my intention to represent those property and business owners in Ladonia who otherwise would not have a voice in local affairs. founding father John Emmett said, "Facts are stubborn things, and whatever may be our wishes or inclinations or dictates or passion, they cannot alter a state of facts and evidence." The fact that Mayor Harry would advocate her responsibility to represent the citizens of Ladonia on this committee is unfortunate, as is her situation, and we wish her well. The fact that her appointee has obvious leadership experience gaps in conflicts of interest when it comes to many of the committee's areas of oversight cannot be overstated and must never be forgotten by the other members. Best example of this failure to recognize a conflict of interest and abstain from involvement is the appointee's very public personal contact with the former chief of police and his involvement in the dismissal of the chief. Members of the committee, you have a duty to mitigate conflicts of interest where they're obvious, even if it means having uncomfortable and very public conversations. A recurring theme in my conversations with citizens continues to be a concern for the small town feel of Ladonia, including the relatively quiet nights and dark skies. So I would encourage in council that you keep these essential Ladonian attributes top of mind. We like it quiet and we like to see the stars out here. Zoning details like noise restrictions and requirements that all outdoor lighting be limited and placed downward to the ground are specific considerations that have been voiced. Also, zoning that restricts population density will benefit the city of Ladonia with higher quality development and maximized valuations in those new developments, resulting in better tax revenue with managed growth. It's not always obvious, but when it's done correctly, less is truly more. And finally, freedom, and we can all agree that freedom is probably the most important American attribute, but my freedom ends where yours begins. I too am a homeowner and property owner in Ladonia. My family and I have dreams and aspirations for our future here as other families do. I would certainly hope that short of any absolutely necessary eminent domain action, we keep these dreams in mind, and so long as property owners use their land, use of their land does not devalue or otherwise intentionally or unintentionally harm their neighbors, they'd be allowed to continue the use of their property under a listing zone until property ownership is transferred. And I appreciate you speaking to some of these concerned this evening. Many thanks for your service to this community and to the future of Ladonia and Lake Rottweil.
All right. Yes, ma'am? And then I think I, whatever.
Okay. I'm Cheryl Manning, and, um, I just wanted you to address the light situation. I did not want us to become like Dallas. If you look towards Dallas, I mean, there's just, I mean, uh, what are you gonna do? I wish you would do, or they, they, you know, shine down to the ground, I mean, and, address that for me, please.
We, we do, I mean, Connor, if you don't mind flipping there, then, correct me if I misspeak or anything, uh, we have in there the lighting, that it be fully shielded and directed down, uh, cause we, we do recognize that we're in a rural area, people like to see the night sky, don't necessarily like to see the big glow unless it's Friday night football, so, but with a business coming in, we want to make sure, similar to the race track situation, we, we, we want that to be compatible. We're in a, we're in a rural area, we like the night sky, things like that. So we do have standards in there for the businesses. And once again, when you look at that zoning map, the businesses are, are really focused along 34, but, but hopefully we're gonna have a high standard and we have a little bit of off that as well. So, so I think with those standards in there, uh, will, will really help minimize that layer that people.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. So, so they are going to point, yeah.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
What about residential homes?
Uh, uh, sorry, uh, the question was maybe about residential homes as a follow-up to that? Oh, and ma'am, did you write your, okay, thank you. Uh, Connor, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but I think with our residential, I, I think we're applying those only to businesses on there, so I guess if you, if, hopefully there's enough separation of your floodlights and I could be in, in your neighbor's, neighbor's bedroom window on that.
It is non-residential.
It is, it is non-residential only, so it would not affect.
If we change that, maybe new construction, since then you get, you get them on three acres, you can get all these homes and everybody has all these lives. Our sky is gone.
That is something, every, everything's open, that, uh, if, if that's something we want to consider adding to residential, that, that is something that the mission board could, uh, consider.
Please.
That's it.
My name is James Moffett. Uh, I hope everybody doesn't get mad at me, but this is for Jerry and Judge. Uh, we've gone through the zoning process and I hope once it's done, say, the initial first five years, when people come in wanting a little picky, minor variances, you say no. You've gone through the process, don't let them start changing a little bit here, a little bit there. And then the second thing I wanted to follow up with, something that Ed Shinpa mentioned, if I remember right, it was in the last zoning meeting, and that is, we do live out in the county and I don't know how the county plans on enforcing their development policies and all of that. I believe Ed said he wasn't happy about the co-op happened to be the enforcer and requiring something before they put up a temporary power pole or before you give water. My personal opinion is, that's the only way you're gonna enforce it, and I hope that somehow you state in the ordinances that it require some kind of proof that they've got approval from the county before they get any electricity, water, sewer, any of that.
And, and there, the, the process will follow the same as boat dock, where there is a lake development permit, where it's basically saying, uh, you come in, you, you get your permit, and then we do have that connection certificate. Once everything's done, uh, you could be permanently connected. Uh, now, when we talk about enforcement, uh, one of the things that we were wanting to do, uh, this was the same as boat dock too, uh, is to, th- this is only for everyone, so no one wanted to necessarily, you know, have a full course of, of what the zoning could be. Can we send notices out? Try to get voluntary compliance, just talk to people and let them know. A- and, and that's how this is set up. Yes, there, there's, there's, uh, you know, the, the legal part in there and, and compliance and all that stuff, but what we're, we're trying to do is get voluntary compliance, let people know, educate people on there and hopefully have them go, go fix it. But the standards are in there that you can enforce and, and go to that, whether it's the connection certificate, uh, and, and things like that. So, so, once again, trying to be more of the carrot approach, but there is the teeth in there that you could, you could enforce the compliance. Yes, sir?
My name's Walt Garrison. I signed that sheet there. Uh, my concern is you're talking about the, coming in with the existing, whatever you're doing on your property, what's, what's happening now, it's gonna be grandfathered in, staying in. Uh, we're outside the city of Ladonia, so we don't pay state taxes now. Uh, the two acres joining our property, uh, our neighbors have turned it into a junkyard, basically old campers, uh, you know, trucks used, and so, the, we're outside the city, so they're saying that they can enforce it, but yet, immediately found out we're paying taxes that we shouldn't have been paying. But the interest that I'm concerned about, if you're zoning this, that you've zoned this district, our business, uh, that has regulations and stuff, and would that be clean up and they would have to fall into regards of that? If you're saying you're gonna be grandfathered in, you can continue to do what you're doing, which, I mean, this, it's, there's, this, they got street front property that is adjacent to mine, which would make it extremely difficult, plus the, the amount of tires and stuff that have been dumped in the back, it's a hazard cleanup now, so to allow them to continue doing what's happening is a concern. And it seems like there's no benefit in making it a zoned district, that I'm gonna pay more taxes and they get to still do the same thing that you're doing, so, which nobody can enforce the cleanup now, cause they're outside the city limits. Zoning us into this district or this business district, is that putting us where they're gonna regulate it now, if you're saying you're grandfathered in, so I'm a little confused on that.
There, there's a couple of things. Is it an actual business or, or, that, is it an actual salvage or record business, or is it more just?
It's just somebody that turns the yard into younger.
It's, it's very bad.
Okay.
It's very bad. I have called the sheriff's department. I have filed a complaint, thank you for calling that. And it's required for the show, and they needed, they're called asking.
So, so a couple of things, uh...
Yes, I'm three, three quarters of a mile representative, and she gets what that cost. So that's not going to work with the commercial.
Okay. So, so a couple of things going on there, uh, and what controls what? So, so the zoning will control the, the land use, and so, and, I may have this wrong, but, but, correct, correct me please if I'm wrong. So if it's just a homeowner and they have an old truck, I, basically it...
That's your brand out, saying that's the cost.
Okay. So, so, cause, cause right now, I don't think the county has any, any, as far as nuisance, there, there's a few things in, in, once again, this is sort of out of the realm of zoning. So, so if it was a business, yes, we, we'd sort of be with that existing use locking in. If it was a record or salvage business, but that doesn't sound like what it is, it just sounds like it's a home with
Junk.
Junk on it.
Junk.
Or, or, okay, so, so it, it's, it's a, it's a property with junk on it. So, so the zoning really doesn't, uh, a- address that, cause it's not necessarily the, the use of the land, so, but there's something, uh, that are outside of zoning that the county may do as far as nuisance, if there's like lead batteries out there, there could be, you know, it's a help it, issue or something like that, but, but that's a little outs, cause it's not really a business, it's just someone has left this stuff on their land, so it's not necessarily a, a use on there, and it's just really a vacant use right now, or, or. Oh, the, oh, the.
They have these workers, they have no heat, they have no, they have no water, they have no water. But just trust me, I have talked with the city, I've talked with the county commissioner, and I have now talked with the sheriff. I will get a petition if necessary.
Okay. Cause there, there's a couple, if, if it is, if, there's a couple of things that the state law does allow for like the screening of junkyards and, and, and things like that. So if it's a more specific issue like that, there's a few things that the county, uh, cause just so you know, the, the, the state's pretty strict on, like a city, uh, there, there's sort of home rule, once they get over 5,000 population, they can do a lot of stuff. Counties, the, the, the state says, "You can only do what we have in the Texas local government code." You have, you have to follow, it's all 254, you have to follow this rule. So there's a few things that we could look at and I could talk to, to Jerry about that, some things that are in other parts of the state law that may address that, but, um, but I'll need to find out a little bit more about that and then, then, but I don't think we're enshrining them as, as a use. But, but let me talk a bit, a little bit more with Jerry and see if he has some other, uh, it looks like we have another question or comment.
Hello, my name is Diana Castile, and the center with me is Minister Stacy Woods, and we are here, excuse me, girl, Stacy Williams. And I'm standing on behalf of the Pleasant Grove Christian Methodist Episcopal Church here in Ladonia, Texas, where part of our zoning, the new zoning is going to take place with directly affect the church. I heard you say, and let me tell you who I am, I am the presiding elder, supervise 33 churches, and in those 33 churches, Pleasant Grove is one of those churches. Um, I hear you when you say that you are not trying to change the current use, and I have most of your statements and there's some questions. That concerns me, cause coming from a small town myself, I know that a lot of times when we say we're not trying to do something, in turn, we end up doing it. It may not be now, but five years down the lane, down the road, five years later, it's going to directly affect not only the church and the cemetery, but other people and their property as well.
Amen.
Um, so I guess my question is, because it seems that, that this project has been in place, or you've been studying this for a long time, and I don't know if there was any conversations that were had prior to tonight with the citizens of Ladonia to see about how they feel about this new zoning before you just presented it to them, which is, is the area concern for me as well. Um, and so, and then thirdly, how will it directly affect the church and the cemetery, being that it's going to be so close, um, to the church?
The, uh, in the, in the use chart, which says what, what's allowed in all the different districts, and Connor, correct me if I'm wrong, since you have a property out there, uh, churches are allowed in, in all the districts. So as far as if your concern is with the zoning...
With the, um, the businesses and everything else that's going to be placed around there, will you, will someone come and propose the church to sale their property?
No. Well, no, no one has, uh, cause what happens and, and what, just, I'm curious, I don't know exactly where it is, but do you know what color on the map? It, it's around the church?
Yellow.
Yellow? So that, that is, that is the rural estate, single family district, so it'd be for, for single family homes. So if there's a business in that area right now, it would stay, but if something new was to happen, it would happen under that, uh, single family rural estate, which is the, the one acre lot zoning district. So, so that, new things that would happen around the church, if it's zoned on the yellow, uh, it'd be the one acre, one acre zone.
And that, that goes for the cemetery property of choice?
Correct. And, and you could, it's a, part of the church, and churches are allowed in, in all the zoning districts. So there, there wouldn't be a problem as far as you, well, church is already there, so it'd be considered pre-existing use, but also we have church as a use itself, and so that's also allowed in all the districts.
You said at the lease itself?
As a, as a, oh, oh, sorry, uh, the church is allowed as a use
As a use.
As a, as a land use category, so, so, in, in all the districts.
I just wanted to get clarification to make sure that the church and the property will be the same and under the zoning, so thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi there. Hi there. Jacob, Nolan? Yeah, I have a little bit of a specific question that I'd be happy to circle back with you after the fact, cause it's specific to a particular parcel. I was wondering if you might kind of talk a little bit more about the lake operations district and how it relates to the lake commercial district, and then what the guiding rules were for establishing that contour? I've got a comment on that.
Yeah, so, so a little history on the lake operations district. So if you, if, uh, and Connor, if he could flip on the PowerPoint to just go advance one or two slides, there's a copy also. So if you're over there, you could look at that one, or, or if you're, if you're... So the lake operations district, it's this blue district that you see right around the shoreline. That generally, uh, matches, uh, where, where the lake operations is for, uh, the operation of the lake, uh, generally matches where Upper Trinity's, uh, property is. And so you can see down here on the, let's see if I have my pointer here, is it on the CBRP? Of course, the, the dam is down here, uh, on this end of the lake, this is where the dam will be, as you will spill away, uh, emergency spillway right there. So this is to operate the dam and, uh, there's gonna be some boat ramps here at, at, at different locations. You can also see this red right here, and this was seen as, uh, a catalyst type development for like, we could have a really nice area here because we have 34 and we have this nice intersection, so we could have development here. And then over here, there's also gonna be a boat ramp, so there could be a potential amphitheater, park, rent, some type of public, private partnership, uh, going on, on the commercial, on this lake commercial and also, uh, this area. So previously, when we had the version of this map before, where we were having the lake boundary start was, uh... uh, which, which is where the state law says it can start, uh, because we had moved, we had trucked from this bubble line, and we also had trucked from that side. But we decided to include in that, so that's why we had to create the lake operations district, because it wasn't there in the past. Uh, so, now that there's gonna be a district there, we had to make sure that we had a purpose statement, and we talked about in the purpose statement, that's one of the sort of slides we showed, was, uh, it's for the operation of the lake, and you have the secondary commercial uses, because we have this over here, of course, boat docks are gonna be crossing, uh, and that's an allowed use in this district, they're gonna be crossing probably where we have these properties right there. Uh, so, that's sort of the, uh, vision of what the blue is and lake operations district. So, we also have our government conservation district, which it's probably gonna stay rural, but you could have campgrounds, or there could be other, other things like that, because we do have, you know, some of that area right there at the edge of the lake, also joined that lake operations. Uh, so, that is some of the discussion and some of the recent changes to the document. Does that get some of the points on there?
Yes, sir, that is part of it. Maybe to elaborate on it more, so the lake commercial zoning, as well as the lake operations zoning share pretty much all the same land use types. It seemed like the distinguishing language between them was that the land operations zones are controlled by N W and D. So, I think, I'm just trying to understand that it is up to the full sense of the riparian zones that that, that border actually goes. Lake operations zone should be coincide with the upper riparian zone down to the constable zone.
Correct.
Right. So, we've got a parcel of property where that zoning overlay extends beyond, onto land that we haven't come to terms with, upper trendy yet, on, and don't really have an intent to allow it to be condemned. So, we have a little bit of a mismatch between, well, I'm reading this kind of government, uh, you like operations overlay on private property.
And, and as I was looking through, because Melinda had sent me the protest, and are you referring to this one right here?
Yes, sir.
Two mounds, if you're sort of looking.
Yes.
Because what we could do, uh, and, and so, we, we can, and tonight, we could, we could switch that back to yellow on there, because as far as, when we had seen that, it was, it was one whole property, and we, we didn't know if it was all a property ownership or what, what the deal is on that. We were under the assumption that this was all upper trendy, so it would make sense to carve out that. But seeing your, seeing your note on there, if we need to show that, that how it's shown, Connor, can you flash over one more slide to the, and one more? Yeah, there we go. Sorry, everybody, I'm gonna come over here, because right down here, this is sort of where we show that area, so it's yellow, so that would probably be just rural estate is probably the right category for that. So, if, if, if that, because like I said, we saw that on the protest letter, so that's something, if that was a request, I think that would something the commissioners' court would recommend changing.
Perfect. Yeah, if we could, maybe just catch up after this, and on that specific track and that protest, that'd be fantastic.
Because the one thing, because let me, let me mention one thing, and this is for everyone as well, too. Because if the commissioners' court recommends it tonight, um, they'll either recommend it subject to any of their changes. And if that one changed that, that we want, uh, right now, and they're, and I can't vote, but maybe that's what they want, maybe it's not, but let's say if it is what they want, they would need to sort of make that recommendation tonight to change that. Wouldn't it be the only chance? You could come to the commissioners' court public hearing and mention, mention the same thing after we talk, because maybe you don't, maybe you don't want it that way or something like that. So, so that's something that we could talk about, and then it's also something that the commissioners' court would like to...
Let me comment. That's something we're gonna talk about in the next segment, because we're gonna have discussion, and we're gonna take action to approve and perhaps modify the zoning regulations. So, that'll, that's for the next session.
Okay, for next, for next session, so, okay. All right. Yeah, yes, sir. If you don't mind signing in and taking your paper.
My name is Steve Williams, and I just wanna add something quick, or really important. Right now, I'm in an ag position on Agland, and I love to sit in front of the ag market and call my work. Ag up right now, I go quick with a windmill or a windbreak or a shed, I'm like, I don't need a permit.
Yeah, all...
If I need to zone, do I need to get a permit now?
All ag buildings on a lot, two acres or greater, are exempt from...
So, I've got 48 acres, I don't have to, if I'm gonna build a shop, would it be something different, or would it be a flat?
I would, I would consider that partly an ag building, so, so I would say you would need to come in on 48 acres there.
Okay, thank you.
He had 48 acres. If it was ag buildings, if you're on a parcel two acres or more, you don't have to come in for that.
My name is Dawn Stout. I've got a piece of property over here, Doug Janeway's about to beat me over the head with, I think, let's see. I've been asking him for years now to get a definitive answer to this question, and I see we've got a halfway answer to it on what I've been reading tonight about boat docks. My property backs up to the lake, and there's literally only 25 feet from my property line to the shoreline of the new lake. My question tonight is, I see that you are allowing boat docks, and we're gonna have to go forward with that, but is there gonna be any differentiation, that's a big word, between what they call a commercial boat dock and what I can put in and the back of my property to go fishing also?
That's a good, good question. I'm trying to think in the zoning, I don't think we, we just say boat dock. There, there's marina-type development, that would be considered commercial, but I think that's a little bit more than what you're, what you're thinking. Uh, we don't, we don't distinguish in the zoning, we just say boat docks are allowed. So, whether it was your personal resident, residential one, or whether there was a commercial one like you had, let's just say you're a restaurant, and you're having, you know, you put some boat docks out, because maybe it'd be neat for someone to pull their boat up and eat it.
I just wanted to kind of give some kind of reassurance that I wasn't gonna have to lobby Congress to get a permit for this boat dock off on private property.
Well...
We don't know yet about the permit situation for that. That's still to be determined.
Correct. But the, the one thing I would say, maybe, uh, arrow in your, 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 quiver there, is, I, I don't know where you are, but when we talk about the commercial development on this peninsula, we talked about creating a unique place that people would really want to come out and enjoy. We talked about access to the water, talked about those type of commercial boat docks is what we want to see out there. So, there's definitely, that is a good place, a good idea in certain places. Like I said, I don't know where your property is, I, you know, there could be a reason...
I was there about that new second little bridge.
Oh, oh.
How, 34?
Right up here?
Up, up.
Oh, oh, up here. Okay. Are you on the north side or the south side?
I'm on the, uh, west side.
West side, okay.
Yeah. No, no.
Okay.
You see, we're about 15, 15, you know where the new second little bridge is being built?
No.
34.
West side, north side of Merrill Creek.
Yeah, yeah. Merrill Creek is in the back of my property, that's one that's gonna be flooded when it come up tomorrow.
Well, the plan does talk about, we, we want economic development here for the area, we want neat places for people to come and enjoy them. So, there's, the plan mentions places like that, uh, so, I can't speak necessarily for upper trendy.
All I want is a fishing dock back there, okay? So, that's why I'm, there's, there's no definitive permit requirement.
Correct, correct. There's, there's nothing right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello.
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 And if you can, uh, just write your name, or you can write your name afterwards, but if you just speak...
Oh, I was...
Oh, you did, okay. All right.
Is this working?
Unfortunately, you have to get real, real...
Hello?
Yep.
All right. Well, I wrote a little bit here about the lake, just a few minutes ago. Thank you. I got my glasses on, you'll be able to read it. In your pocket. Okay, uh, when planning the zoning for the shoreline surrounding the lake, let's consider making outdoor recreation a higher priority. That is considerably expand the areas for better balance of scenery around the lake. Plan this zoning to encourage non- skin house owners. Plan in such a way as to leave significant areas for free development, allowing trails, and the experience of solitude and fundamental enjoyment of running and walking the shoreline. Consider the growing boom in popularity of dispersed camping in recent years. Plan areas zoned for dispersed camping. Allow those who enjoy this basic freedom to be able to select a camping spot without feeling restricted or crowded. Allow undeveloped shoreline to extend from the camping area to make it complete, providing opportunities to get exercise, not kind of typical small lake parks. Consider planning the waterfront lease agreements where it does not restrict the shoreline to walk-in, run, or biking. When the lease agreements block the shoreline and pedestrian right-of-way, it also blocks the residential property owners' opportunities for exercise, basic enjoyment of walking the shoreline. This type of planning becomes a permanent oppression to everyone's freedom. In the past, it is very likely when the Savvy River Authority held zoning meetings for Lake Milwaukee, Lake Ford, and other SRA lakes, the vast majority of in attendance were property owners around the lake. This had a tendency to underrepresent the greater use for the people. There is no one to represent the public that describes all of us. Lake Milwaukee has a shoreline of somewhere around 200 miles. Yes, the official trail that I know of it is that the state park is less than five miles long. Contrast this to Lake Lavine, which is built by the Corps of Engineers. An equestrian and hiking trail called the Trinity Trail has been built along the shoreline. Last I read, the trail was around 25 to 30 miles long. This example should be the way of the future, if we want to encourage active lifestyles for those who live around the lake and come to visit the lake. That's all I have.
What would you like to say?
Uh, Michael Anderson.
Michael.
Please, not on my property, okay? Because I don't want anybody walking on my property.
Yes, sir.
Did you hear this?
Yes.
My name's Hilton. I got some land out there off 3355, okay? We've filmed movies out there. Lots of movies. This zoning crap, you don't have to vote for it. This is like a damn house organization. You know, you move into a neighborhood, then you have to pay the HOA, hundreds of dollars just to stay in that neighborhood. They tell you how high your dress is, they tell you what buildings you can build, it's the same damn thing. Same thing. You don't have to approve it. They're begging you to, because like that other guy said, they might own land around that lake. Don't give away your rights, okay?
And, oh, oh, hold on, Mr. Hilton, was that your last name, or?
That's all I need to know.
Yeah, that's all you need to know.
Sir, you've turned broke the rules.
Rules, right? Any, any other comments? All right, well, I think, I think that's all our public comments, so, Newt, what we could do is, uh, turn it back over to you, and if you want, we could close the public hearing and move on to the second part, or to the, to the other meeting.
Okay, I, I apologize.
Yes.
Uh, let's go ahead, and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn our 5:30 PM meeting that is extending itself. I still can make that airplane something, I think.
I would like a motion to adjourn this last meeting. Commissioner Magnus, and, uh, Mr. Wallace, maybe, uh, provide a second. Uh, all those in favor, I'm going to start with Commissioner Magnus, uh, Commissioner Magnus, Mr. Wallace, and Mr. Morris.
Yes.
So, we have a, and I'm gonna vote aye, that gives us a unanimous, uh, decision. We're going to pass the motion. Agenda item number four, discussion, consideration, and action regarding, uh, Lake Ralphall zoning regulations, the recommendation, recommendation of commissioners, recommendation to commissioners' court. With that said, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I would like a motion to, to recommend the Lake Ralphall zoning regulations.
Okay, can I have a second?
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
So, can I have a discussion?
All right.
Okay. Commissioner Magnus has, uh, seconded the motion. With that said, I'm going to open it up for discussion.
I think one thing in the zoning, we're getting the zoning map on the next agenda, correct?
I think one thing on the zoning regulations, uh, that we need to consider is through the light restrictions from non-residential use to non-residential hand-remption.
Would you like to make that as a motion?
Do we make a motion?
Do we make a motion?
Yeah, so, men, the motion to include that...
I'd be a motion.
And we're going to establish a forum and we're going to be the whole zoning regulations. Yeah. We're going to be acting on the zoning regulations and we'll be making a recommendation to, uh, Commissioners Court. So that's what this meeting is about. Uh, I'm going to start by establishing a forum and the time is 7:20. Okay. Uh, I'm going to look to Commissioner Magnus. He's present. Uh, our commission is present with John Ed Schinbaum, uh, Mr. Wallace and Mr. Morris and myself. And I would ask for, uh, we're going to skip over public comments. I think everybody had an opportunity to speak earlier and we're going to move right into a discussion and consideration. It's agenda item number three, uh, action to approve minutes from November 17th, 2022 from that meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'd like to motion to approve a minute from November 17th, 2022.
Okay. Commissioner Magnus has, uh, made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah. Commission member Schinbaum has given us a second. Any discussion? All those in favor and we're going to start with Commissioner Magnus, uh, Commissioner Schinbaum, Commissioner Wallace and Commissioner Morris.
Aye.
So we have a, and I'm going to vote aye. That gives us a unanimous, uh, decision. We're going to pass the motion. Agenda item number four, discussion, consideration and action regarding, uh, Lake Ralph Hall zoning regulations and the recommendation, recommendation of Commissioners, recommendation to Commissioners Court. Uh, with that said, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I would like a motion to, to recommend the, the Lake Ralph Hall zoning regulations.
Can I have a second? Do I have a second?
Open.
Just going to have a discussion.
All right.
Okay. Commissioner Schinbaum has, uh, seconded the motion. With that said, I'm going to open it up for discussion.
I think one thing in the zoning, we're getting the zoning map on the next agenda, correct?
I think one thing on the zoning regulations, uh, that we need to consider is for lots restrictions, uh, from non-residential use to non-residential hand residential use.
Would you like to make that as a motion?
Do we make a motion? Make a motion?
Yeah. I submit the motion to include that.
I'm in the motion to include that into the zoning regulation.
And let me, let me say this. I think our zoning regulations, apparently we picked up some property that did not belong to, uh, the upper trinity. And I think, uh, it would be my feeling that if it doesn't belong to the upper trinity, it shouldn't be in the lake operational district.
Or amendment.
Okay. And.
Wouldn't that be in the next?
It's in the, it's in the map, but it's in the regulations as well. We'll do it for our record map.
So Judge, in, uh, in regard to, uh, the map, I would amend the motion or make the motion to amend to include, uh, the map be changed, uh, in accordance with, uh, protest by Mr. Chris Johnson on approximately 13 acres at 33, uh, 95 and on the south side of the lake. That corrects the, the issue with the map and the ownership.
And I would probably go a little bit beyond that and, uh, if there are other properties that doesn't belong to the lake, it should not be included in, uh, the, uh, lake operational district.
That's exactly what I wanted to say.
All right. With those amendments, let's go ahead and, uh, take action on agenda item number three. Uh, go ahead and, uh, have a vote. And I'm going to look to Commissioner Magnus.
Aye.
Commissioner Schinbaum.
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace.
Aye.
And Commissioner, uh, Morris.
Aye.
Okay. And the chairman votes aye, excuse me, chairperson votes aye. Uh, motion passes. Uh, let's proceed to discussion, consideration, action regarding the Lake Ralph Hall zoning regulations and, uh, recommendation of, excuse me, item number five, discussion, consideration, action regarding the Lake Ralph Hall zoning map and the recommendation to Commissioners Court. Can I have a motion on that particular agenda item, agenda item five?
I'll make a motion to recommend that Commissioners Court, uh, with the exception of this property on County Road 3455 that is mostly out and we've got to move the boundary line to the property line on that. Uh, and then on County Road 33, 35, there's a property that is within the line of zoning, uh, that is majority zoned out. I'd like to move that to the property parcel line on that just.
And I, I would like to, uh, to include any other properties that, uh, Daniel determines are not owned by upper trinity.
Yeah. And any other properties not owned by upper trinity do not need to be zoned as lake operational.
Can I have a second to that motion? Commissioner Magnus seconds, uh, Commissioner Wallace's motion. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Commissioner Magnus, uh, Commissioner Schinbaum.
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace.
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Morris.
Aye.
Judge votes aye. Motion passes. Uh, with that done, uh, you know, the Jordan guys, the big race. Daniel, do you have anything to add?
Uh, and Judge, what we could do is, uh, Connor and I will make a new map before it goes to the Commissioners Court and we'll identify these changes and we'll send it to the Commissioner, or to the, to you guys to make sure that we, so you know, uh, that and that we've done that accurately. So you know the proposed changes to the map. We'll highlight those similar to how the boat dock has the zoning changes marked out on that and then we'll present those, uh, we'll have this presentation with your changes that Connor has written down and Melinda has written down and we'll send that to you so you can make sure that we have it all documented. Melinda can double check us too, uh, on that and we'll proceed to the next.
Thank you, Daniel, for all the work you guys have done.
Thank you. It's an honor.
With that done, uh, you know, again, I had Commissioner Magnus to be paid, so you don't need to thank us, but I do want to thank everybody else that's up here and volunteer. Want to thank you all for participating. I think we need to participate in our government if we want it to work. Uh, sorry, we couldn't make everybody happy, but that's the, that's the way the world turns. Uh, all that said, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
I'd like the motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Magnus has made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Commissioner Wallace has given us a second. Now let's go ahead and have a vote. Commissioner Magnus.
Aye.
Mr. Schinbaum.
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace.
Aye.
Commissioner Morris. Judge votes aye. A meeting is adjourned at 7:29. Thank you all.